Thank you. All right, I will call this meeting to order. Wasika Public Schools Board of Education. It is our November regular meeting. Today is Thursday, November 16th, 2023. It is 5:30 PM and we are in the central building, second floor conference room. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Person in second, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Recognition of visitors. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak tonight? I'm gonna guess not. Thanks to all you students for being here. And no emails, I assume? Okay. Moving on then to payment of claims. And Director Dunn, you had the privilege this month?
Yes, I went through the claims. Mr. Mullin printed them out for me. And I will make a motion that we approve accounts payable of $1,472,204.99. October dental, $15,395.01. And payroll of $822,747.77.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for tonight's consent agenda? I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Continuing then with our information items, beginning with our report from community education. If you want to introduce.
Certainly. So as we continue with our department and building reports here for the 2023-24 school year, Paul DeMore here is our Director of Community Education and Recreation. He's here to share with us the great things that are happening in community ed. A lot of fantastic work happening for students, adults, families, and then you'll be interested in hearing about. How's it going?
Thank you. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm just going through a quick recap here. You can follow along on the big screen there. Just to recap, community ed is kind of encompassing a number of different areas. Excuse me. The Family Ed Center is basically our preschool and our ECFE and stuff like that. School age care is our childcare portion. Enrichment classes, recreation classes. Facilities is because our office is the one that's charged with reserving and renting out the facilities on a non-school time basis. Adult basic ed is funneled through community ed. And the last thing is our opening opportunities program, which is an adults with disabilities program. And so those are kind of the different big categories under community ed. First, the Family Ed Center. The biggest part of that is the Junior Jays preschool. Right now, we have seven sections of classes for three to five-year-olds. Some of them do turn six during the year, but basically they start at three to five-year-olds. Our year is off to a great start. We have a great bunch of kids this year and the teachers are doing some wonderful things. They had a transportation fair not too long ago and stuff like that. So they're off to a great start and so that's really going well. The Family Ed Center also is the one that coordinates and performs the early childhood screenings. We have 10 dates a year, performing about 130 screenings every year. Each student is, that is one of the requirements to go to kindergarten. The state requires three things to go to kindergarten. One is to be five by September 1st. One is to have an early childhood screening. And one of them is to be up to date on your shots and immunizations. And so that, those screenings are performed through our department there. We're also the department that compiles the census for zero to four-year-olds. And the last thing is the parent-child classes. We have four sections of those parent-child classes and they meet once weekly for 10 weeks. And that's where the parent and a child come together. They spend some time together. Then they have the separation time, which sometimes doesn't go so well on the first and second night, but by the end, it goes pretty well. And so that's the Family Ed Center. School age care is our childcare portion of community ed. We are aged 33 months through sixth grade. A whole bunch of other criteria kick into place if you want to take young people that are less than 33 months. I have no idea what's magical about 33 months and who came up with that. Somebody at the state said that's the age. So, okay. So within our program, we have three preschool rooms during the school year. And they also provide wraparound care, it's called, where students come to us in the morning. And then if they're in one of our preschool classes, we transport them down the hallway to their preschool class. And then at the end, we transport them back. And, excuse me. And at the end of the day, then parents pick them up. The K6 program provides care before and after school. That's all housed here at the central building. And so the K6 students come here in the morning and then they get bused either to Hartley or to WIS. And then after school, they get bused back. And then that's when they're picked up after school. And we also have full daycare for the K6 students on non-school days. Unless it's one of those, there's two non-school days where the high school is still in session. And most of our workers come from the high school for that K6 program. So those are the two days a year where there isn't K6 childcare. Summer childcare is again aged 33 months through sixth grade and it goes every day, all day, all through the summer. Enrichment and recreation, which is a lot of what people think community ed is. It's year-round opportunities for ages birth to our most senior community members. It's just a nice way of saying that, isn't it? So some of our most popular programs are dance programs, gymnastics, swim lessons, steveball, summer sports camps, evening adult rec opportunities. We have a great partnership with the Art Center that I've talked about before. So we offer our art classes through them. And then there's many, many more as well. But that's just kind of a quick snapshot of that. Other things, again, facility. Our office coordinates all the facility scheduling and rentals for our district. We contract the ABE services through a consortium that's run out of La Sure community ed, actually. But we host it here in the central building. So I just coordinate that part with the La Sure people. And the opening opportunities, they host two classes, is the word, each month. One of them is more of like, just kind of a, it's called a club night, where we put out a whole bunch of games and they play bingo and they have a snack. And the other one is more like a, kind of either a craft class or sometimes it's just as simple as pizza and a bingo. If you serve pizza, a lot of people come. So those are pretty popular. And then just some, how do we, you know, measure our programming? And it's like, how do I know I'm doing well in community ed? All of our programs are registration-related. So basically, you know, the main thing that we use for our performance measures are, okay, how many offerings do we have? Are there strong enrollments in those programs? And then, of course, we have feedback from parents as well. Currently, our enrollment numbers are steady. We actually had a pretty good year last year. Our youth rec programs were up slightly from the year before. So we actually had a pretty good year last year. And we're slowly increasing the number of opportunities. It's hard to increase that number quickly because then all of a sudden you have too many classes and then people aren't ready because then there's too many choices. And so it's a slow process of, if you have a class for a couple of years, eventually the enrollment tails off. And then you kind of phase that one out and you phase something else in to replace it so that your programs are strong. You don't want to be canceling a lot of classes because then people will be like, well, I won't even sign up because it'll probably be canceled. And so that's the strategy with that. And so I think we got a pretty good handle on that. And then one of the things that we're working on specifically this year related to, you know, one of the district goals and stuff is parent engagement. We're trying to establish a baseline this year for parent engagement this year, as well as identifying any subset of our parents with whom we need to increase. I mean, this is kind of based off of our youth programming, our youth enrichment and our youth recreation because they're the ones that have parents. If you're in an adult Richmond, I don't think you want us contacting your parent. Just a thought. And so we do have, in the Family Ed Center and the School Age Care Program, we have kind of a big advantage there where we have parents and guardians. They drop off their kids and they pick them up. And so we get face-to-face with time with them almost on a daily basis. And so we take advantage of this by engaging them in daily conversations. If we want some feedback, we just say, hey, what do you think about this? Or, you know, and we get to give them feedback right away on their child's day. And we get to, you know, hey, are you seeing this at home? Because we're seeing this at here at school. And so that's a big advantage for those two programs. In some of our other programs, we're trying to examine ways to garner feedback from parents and engage them more in our programming. So that's one of our focus areas this year in community ed. And I'm pretty sure that was the last slide. So that's just a really quick snapshot. Right now, the main focus right now is coming up with our winter-spring course offerings. So you'll be seeing a postcard that looks like this in your mail in a couple of weeks. Just got designed yesterday. So it's really kind of cute with our little friend there trying to catch a snowflake on his tongue. And so that's been our main focus right now. Once we get that going, then we'll start delving back into some of the other things. But when we're finalizing the brochure and stuff, that pretty much consumes most of our time in the office. So that's a quickie blurb on community ed. Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns, whatever?
How many, how many programs you have available? Do you know the number?
Oh, I would have to count them up. I don't know.
Next time.
Huh?
Next time.
Okay.
Do you have a waiting list for preschool or school age care or?
So our preschool classes, for the, we have one section of classes that is what we would consider full. We just, you know, just space-wise, you can't manage anymore. The three and four-year-olds have a little bit of room in there. So we're okay. But we have good, we have good numbers. We're up from last year. Last year, if you remember when I reported, last year's three and four-year-olds was a smaller cohort. So our classes were down a little bit. This year, we're kind of back up to the normal, what I would say is the normal range. And our school age care, we're just like everybody else. We're struggling to find staff, especially in our K6 program, the before and after school. So we do have kind of a cap on how many we can take safely to stay within our number ratio. And so that program is basically full right now. We're trying to get more staff so we can expand our before and after school program. Right now, we run, like I said, the three, excuse me, the three preschool rooms. And so we have, each room can hold up to 10. So the preschool ratio is 10 to 1. And I think right now, we have 28 kids in that program.
Your waiting list for the after-school program, I believe last year it was a little larger than this year. How do the two years compare?
How does Sadie?
The two years compare, last year to this year?
In terms of what?
Your waiting list.
I think what you just said is accurate. I think, I think people.
Do you know how many families are?
Oh, I don't, I don't know. I think, I couldn't tell you. I'd have to ask Katie though. Yeah, next time, Adita.
Are you about the same numbers that are enrolled?
Yeah, so we have 72 kids in our after-school program.
And that's about what we ran last year as well?
Yep.
So we didn't grow on staff at all?
It's a struggle. It's a struggle out there. We're not immune to what businesses in the community are feeling.
Do you have any new programs that you would like to share with us? You know, like last year, I went to making sourdough bread and it was interesting.
Yep, so last year, we added sourdough bread. The other thing that we added over the summer, and now we'll see more of it in the fall, is through the Art Center, we invested in some pottery wheels. And so we're trying to expand our ceramics offerings through that. So that's probably, that's one of the biggest things. And then we added some first aid and self-defense type classes through that. And I'm working on talking some people into maybe offering some other classes as well.
We were brainstorming yesterday. When he came in, I said, how's yours, are you?
Well.
But I think one thing that we, the sourdough bread class was one of the classes that came out of a community member saying, you know, we'd like to see some more offerings about this. So, great, would you like to teach something? Yes, I would. Okay, great. So then we partnered with that individual and offered some more classes. So we know we have a lot of talent out there in the community. So if there's something that, you know, you'd like to share with others, please reach out to Paul or in his office and maybe we'll get you on the list to offer a class. And we were talking about time management, is what we were talking about yesterday. And, you know, we all, as we all do, we balance our world. And some people have strategies that keep them less stressed than others. So I was like, well, maybe you should tell people about that and offer a one-night thing on time manager or scheduling. And so just any ideas that people have, I'm willing to have that conversation and see where it goes.
Yeah, and actually, I did think of one that we, we just created a new partnership with the Vibrant Family Chiropractic to put on some classes, like some youth yoga classes and some meditation-type classes that we're trying to put together for this winter-spring brochure. So trying to also create more partnerships with our, with our local businesses and stuff like that, so.
Any other questions or comments? Well, Paul, thank you for being here tonight and sharing.
No problem. Thank you for having us. You bet.
All right, we'll continue then with the superintendent report.
Yeah, well, good evening again. Couple, couple of things this morning, this evening to share about. First item on the agenda is the facilities. And really, what I want to do there is just kind of close the loop from the survey process with the board and with the community, what happened to that, you know, survey process. Those results are posted on our website. You can go through there and look at those results, if you will. The survey was helpful. It provided some additional information, largely similar to previous surveys, both in response rate and the feedback we received. I mean, it's pretty obvious when you look at the survey, you listen to a board discussion and where we all are. You know, we're not, there's not consensus right now on our next steps. We know that. And so hence, no decision on the board agenda for this evening and going from there. So our next steps really is talk about, what direction does the board see for us as an administration moving forward? We really have a handful of options. You know, we have, we certainly have the K6 option that's been out there for a while. That's been talked about for a number of years without much sticking power at this point, we can see from our survey results and our community member. We have the smaller bond option of just repairing some things and getting us several years down the road with the buildings that we have. And then, of course, we have something that we haven't even thought of yet. And that's something that I'm going to be asking the board really to talk about at the December work session, is what would you, what do you see us as administration working on next? If it's, if it's not any of the ideas we've talked about yet, what do you want to see us talking about? Because we don't, we don't really have the option to do nothing unless we take some other actions, right, financially and planning-wise, which could be an option. So I think that, as I think back on the last, you know, four and a half years of this work, with this particular conversation, we can, we can say, did we waste any time? Absolutely not. We've gone down a depth of opportunities and options. And at this point, we don't have one that makes us feel like it's what we should do. So is it a go back to the drawing board? Think of what our next step is? Is it, you know, should we really explore this other option or should we not? And so mostly just for the community and for the board to know, you know, that's kind of the next step for me is as we close that loop, we got the feedback. It told us what we, what we kind of thought we were going to see, which is there just isn't a consensus right now about particularly the K6 option. So what's the next steps? One thing I've asked Colin to do for us, which I'll bring to that work session, is, let's say we were to do a smaller bond, a $6 million, and just repair at Hartley and WIS. And it wouldn't be an upgrade or necessarily change the look of it, but we have everything fixed and modernized, at least fixed to get us through the next number of years. And what would that look like? What would those projects be? So as we talk through that, I think it's only fair to you as a board to think about what those projects would be and have that conversation. So that's the plan. So discussing at the next work session in depth, really as a board, what do you see as the next steps for this process for us? I can't, it's not obvious to me right now what more information you would need about the current options we have. So maybe it's just those aren't the options, right? And so then what is, what is the next step? So that's just what I wanted to share with on facilities tonight. So people say, okay, what did you learn? Because I know we've had a couple of phone calls, you know, how did the vote go? Even on election day, where do I go? Well, there's not anything on the ballot. We're getting feedback. We're just trying to figure this out. And, and I do know we have a, we have a challenging job because our job is to advocate for the students and provide the best environment we can for them. But we also have to respond to what our public is interested in engaging and supporting. And that's a, that's a hard job that takes time and consideration and thinking about all the options. And as perspectives change and we gather more information, it's an ongoing discussion. We can't stop talking about it and just pretend it's going to go away. But we also have to recognize that if it starts, time to go a different direction, let's do that. So, okay?
Yeah, so the December 7th workshop, we'll kind of just go over the current options. We can bring in some about other options. We could say, let's go back to the drawing board. Really, let's just have like a full discussion and maybe we can kind of come to some kind of consensus to give direction for the next step, whatever that is. But lots, lots, full discussion, lots of options. And it could be, start all over. So that's, yeah.
Well, yeah. And I, in all honesty, you think about things that were the best option four years ago may not be anymore. And so we just have to think through that, that looks like. Good.
Thank you. Any questions for Eric about?
Okay, very good. And the strategic plan topic, just want to highlight, you know, our four areas of strategic priorities. Learning for all, community edge, community engagement, efficient and effective use of resources, safe and welcoming environment. We'll highlight some of the things that's going on in those areas. The DAC meeting, we'll be meeting here shortly, talking about the world's best workforce goals and what happened and what our report is for this particular year before we submit that in December with some of our last year's results into this fall's results. We've also had some opportunity, this goes a little bit into policy speaking too. Policy Committee has done a lot of work with what the policies need to be, to be updated, some of the new legislation. So the DAC meeting will be kind of getting a little bit back to true reform and some of its work about talking about curricular resources and standards and how things are heading so that we, we don't just get so focused on results and data. We're talking about the curriculum and instruction as well as part of that process. So great work by the Policy Committee. As you can see by the number of things we have to consider for the first reading tonight. Those were a lot of pages of line by line when it came to learning for all to think through. So great work and I really much appreciate the time and hours spent by the Policy Committee for that. And then also getting ready for the REDACT implementation as things are going on to, to move through the legislation. I happened to run into one of our staff members today. We were talking about the REDACT and he said, boy, are we so lucky to have Brooke McGuire and the work that she's done and been able to see going forward. Apparently, there was a regional union meeting or something last night and there were some folks who are not in as good a place as we are as far as being prepared to support the new law. And so very grateful for that. So working on, because at the end of the day, our job is to teach and learn, teach, teaching, teaching, learning, right? Instruction, everything else, everything else, maybe except for safety, right? Everything else is second to the teaching, learning. That's our job. We're an educational institution. So I feel really good about that strategic priority right now and our results so far in the first trimester are looking good. Community engagement really comes down to getting out there, communicating, coffee with the superintendent. We've had a couple of times. Next one, I think, is set up for here a couple of weeks from now. Had a chance, I wasn't able to attend Green Seam, which is a, is a offshoot of Greater Mankato Growth, which is kind of the chamber over there in Mankato. And that's the rural end. They spent a day over here in Wasika a couple of weeks ago, touring local businesses, talking what you're going to do. I think they ended up actually at the warehouse for the evening. And I wasn't able to get there. I had something that hung out with me, but I had a chance to meet with them yesterday and kind of catch up on some of the things we're looking for to, to continue to enhance our CTE, particularly, but also our ag programs as well. They're also as equally as aware as we are that the more graduation requirements the state places on things that may or may not be necessary, then the less elective kids, the less electives kids could take. So how can we cross those things over, right? And be able to create, like construction and geometry, geometry, that kind of thing. Agriculture could meet a lot of science standards too. So thinking through that kind of process. Effective use of resources, a lot of work right now in negotiations. Again, thanks for the negotiations committee, many hours we've spent in the last few weeks. And we're starting to scratch the surface of making some progress, which is good. But working hard on that to make sure we improve our contracts for our staff and stay within our resources of financial means. Working on how does the levy work and, of course, working on staffing right now. Matt and his team, I talked to him this morning. They're about done with the audit. We can expect probably a predicted fund balance here in the next week or so. And then by December 1st, they'll have that publication out, and then of course, bring it to you in December for review and approval. And then always working on safe and welcoming environment. How do we make sure that our schools are where staff and students want to be? Bringing it back to that desired daily experience document we looked at as we were completing our strategic plan. Everybody wants to be heard. Everybody wants to feel safe. I mean, I think every human does, right? So, working through that. PTO brought in a speaker that spoke to our K-6 kids, which I heard very positive, positive feedback from. I think it was about bullying and confidence was one of the comments there. Mental health awareness is something we're continuing to focus on at all of our buildings. And we're proposing that from a positive perspective as too. I think sometimes you can approach mental health work from a deficit perspective of what's wrong with people. What, what's, what are you hurting with? What's, what are you worrying about? There's also a way to be healthy with your mental health and feel good about yourself and be proactive. And so, trying to make sure we're balancing that script so it doesn't always feel like we're just focusing on the challenging piece of it, but how are you managing so things are positive for you? We have busy kids, right, obviously coming in here after doing a lot of their, this is like a snippet of their day, right? To keep them, keep people feeling comfortable about themselves and what they're doing is important. And, you know, I think it just, it always is worth mentioning safety and security protocols. Always looking at what we can do better for that. Looking at some, some different things at the high school with some different mechanisms to put cameras in some different places. And nothing that's different right now, but it's always assessing and thinking and, you know, vaping is something we're working with in our, for our youth. That's nothing new. Nothing unique to us, and we don't have a major issue, but it's something that is there, right? And so, we're continuing to look at what we can do to support kids in their education and but also making sure we can, you know, eliminate that as best we can, right, from the beginning. So, so working a lot of things, all strategic plan. Those four priorities, much more, I would say, well, all-inclusive since some of them are priorities we had in prior strategic plans. So, you can see a lot of work going on right now.
Any questions for Eric about this or any part of his report? I assume you're going to give the report for Matt?
Yep, yep. So, Matt is being a dad this evening for parent-teacher conferences, so it was this morning, but then it wasn't going to be, and, you know, so anyway, so no big deal for that, no problem. The thing I want to point out to you, particularly when it comes to the expenditures, is that, you know, we made some significant reductions to our expenditure budget this particular year. And as you can see by we're trending on the graph, we are right where we were in years past as far as spending, spending unit date. The finance committee had a chance to look at this in depth last week, and, you know, you can see right now the expenditures were sitting at about our total budget, 21%, just as we were the last two fiscal years. So, that's a kudos to our leadership teams, to all of our staff. Obviously, Elizabeth who built the budget, now Matt implementing it and saying that, you know, we were going to reduce expenditures, and right now, we're spending accordingly for the budget. So, that's the comment there. Enrollment is, is holding steady, you can see. I think we were down a handful, a couple more kids, or one or two more kids in this particular piece. Yep, three, very common for this time of the year as students go south for a lot, some students moving south for some of the winter months. But again, trending a little bit, not significantly, but a little bit higher than we had, or expected for enrollment, so that's a positive thing. We do expect that, as I mentioned in my report, the audit here is just finishing up with the last few things, and we'll have those that information here in the coming weeks. Nothing that has thus far caused us to believe it's going to be much different than what is predicted as we see every year. So.
Any questions? All right, move on, moving on then to our committee and board member reports. Adida, do you want to start us off?
Sure, thank you. The foreword. We had a couple of meetings with the policy committee, and we review several policies, and some of them are, we are going to approve, some of them we are going just have first reading. They were very interesting policies. Series 600, right?
Yes.
I mean, that's for, we just took our time, and therefore, we will have just several readings on those policies, like 616, 617, 20, 21, 22. Then I will let you guys talk about the negotiations. And I think that's it for myself.
Thank you.
Because of the lateness of our meeting last month, I only had one committee meeting, finance, and we kind, we kind of talked about how enrollment and contract settlements are affecting the budget, and just had kind of a general discussion about that.
I was in the same committee, so that's my only idea as well.
Same as else too. I've not had any other committee meetings.
I sat with policy, and like Adida said, you know, there's a lot of line items, I think I covered on that, and I just, you gotta go through them a little bit fine tooth and work them all.
Thanks, policy committee, for all you work on that. I know. But anyway, as you guys are reading, we have two, two readings for a lot of those policies. So, if you have questions, make sure to address those to either the committee or to Eric. And yeah, my only committee I had this month, but I had many meetings, was negotiations. We do have one contract up for gratification tonight or to approve tonight. That's the clerical contract. And, and then we did TA a couple of other groups, and so we're going to discuss strategy and next steps during our close session. So, we'll get into more of that there. So, that's all that I had. Moving on then to recognitions. Oh, and I forgot.
Your students, yeah.
I forgot our students. I'm sorry, guys. You guys have the most to talk about, I'm sure.
Okay, so recently, we had the Common Grounds Club. So, that started this week. It's about students coming together. We talk about like current issues, and we find common ground. And so, that was a really fun kickoff. So, thank you to Pastor Jolene, who was our first speaker. And then indoor this year was really good. Yeah, everyone had fun with that. And then we're proud of our football team for making it as far as they did. And the band really enjoyed playing that band for their game.
Even though it was really cold.
Cold. And then our math team had their first meet on Monday. And they got fourth, but they ended up with 50% more points than they usually get. So, that was pretty impressive. And then our holiday choir concert is coming up, December 18. And I really like our musical selection this year. I think this one is one of my favorites so far. And then the Courage Retreat for the underclassmen is tomorrow, and so there's going to be juniors and seniors who are leading groups there. And then the Fall Play is tonight, tomorrow, and Saturday at 7:00, and then there's one performance on Sunday at 2:00. And then just the startup of our winter sports, like swimming, basketball, gymnastics.
It's going really good. Like, I'm having a good time, but I, it's a lot of work, guys. I just gave a practice, so. Also, Common Grounds is a really important club, so, to us, so we really wanted to get the word out to you guys. And we're really excited where it's going to take us.
When does that club meet?
So, we're still figuring out a schedule, but our first meeting was on Monday, and so we're going to see what else we can do December, for our December meetings, but yeah.
Yeah, that sounds a really neat club to get going, so. Thank you. I apologize for almost missing you. Do you guys want to start us off on our recognitions and positive feedback?
Yeah, I guess to say what, exactly what I just said, I'm really, I was very excited for Pastor Jolene to speak for us, and I'm really, I'm really grateful for her talk, because it was amazing.
Yeah, she was very welcome.
All right. Alyssa, do you have recognitions?
I've got a few things. I'll start with Honor Society. That was a few weeks ago. That went really well, so congratulations to those students. And then a special thank you for 212. They provided the beverages, I suppose, for, after the Honor Society program. Obviously, the football team, there's a few guys out there I see right now. And then Blue Jay Blast this week, I know, so the Chairs, Wasika News had a good article on the Blue Jay Blast. And it looks like the Chairs are Laura, Melanie, and Julie, and so they've been putting in a lot of work this, this week. So, just want to give them some recognition for all of their hard week work for that event.
Thank you. Baron.
I just wanted to cover the Blue Jay Blast. It seems like it takes a lot of people's time to get all that to pull together, and it's very nice of everybody to get involved, like they do.
Yep. Well, and as a member of the PTO also, I can say that all those dollars that are raised, it goes back to our schools. So, it's, it is a really important event, and, and our, our schools directly benefit from that, so.
It's a fun, fun thing to attend to.
Yep, yep. I wanted to highlight a couple of programs that are being offered at the junior, senior high. And you guys just mentioned the eighth grade Courage Retreat, and I just kind of wanted to add on with that, because Eric was talking about mental health supports and being proactive. And that is definitely an example of providing mental health support in, in a positive, proactive way. And so, that's tomorrow, right? And that's been going on for a number of years, and it's, I know that it's a beneficial program. But I also wanted to highlight, I got an email today for the Wing Program at the, at the high school. It's a new program designed to provide academic intervention and support to any seventh, twelfth, to 12th grader who wants it. So, it's after-school program. And parents, you should have gotten a message from them on campus today if you want more information about it. But it sounds like a really great thing to get started and to try to keep kids out of having to do credit recovery. So, I think that's, that really sounds great, so.
I would like to thank you to everyone who helped with preparation of veterans' programs last week, I think last week.
Yep.
I think it was in all three schools, and just wanted to say thank you.
Well, first of all, this is American Education Week. I don't know anybody else knew that, but this is American Education Week. And I also wanted to mention the Minnesota Honor Society. And I did a little, little research here, and Addie is a current member, and Colin just got on, and Grant's daughter, Leah, got on. And Adida's daughter, Lucia, also got on, so. Thought that was really, really neat.
How many kids were there who got this year?
Forty-two, I think it was.
Something like that. It was more than usual this year. Like, we had like a lot of good people.
That's it.
Okay.
I had some of the same. I also wanted to recognize, and correct me if I'm wrong. I believe Bill Kushel was announced as the Teacher of the Year. So, congratulations to him. I know he's done a lot of hard work on some of the programs he's done and some of the innovations he's done in the past few years. So, it's nice to see that recognized, because he really, he's very passionate about that. So, congratulations to Bill on that, and same things we had already said.
I had not heard that yet. That's exciting. That's. All right, ready to move on to action items? I'm in the right spot on the agenda. Yeah. All right, action items. Can I get a motion for item A? I'll make a motion to approve the acceptance of received gifts and donations.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote, and this is a roll call. So, Caitlin, could you call the roll?
Grant Shepard?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
Adida Mansfield?
Yes.
Theron Kruger?
Yes.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item B?
I'll make a motion to approve the set rate for out-of-district, non-public transportation.
I'll second that. First and a second, any discussion?
That's a rate that's primarily set by the state in terms of moving students that would have to be served outside of Wasika Public Schools for special education services primarily. And also out-of-district, non-public, like a private school or something like that, so. But that's a rate we want to keep current with the current allowable rate.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item C?
I make a motion to approve 2023-2025 master agreement with clerical employees.
I'll second that. First and a second, any discussion? I just want to thank the negotiating team from the clerical group. They were really great to work with, and yeah, really easy process. So, I appreciate all their work that went into that, so. All right, if there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item D?
Motion to approve the reviewed policies.
Second.
First and a second, and that is policy 618, Assessment of Student Achievement. Any discussion?
There was just some redefinition of graduation standards to academic standards. It was pretty minimal with this one.
If there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item E?
Can make a motion to approve final reading of revised policy 5332, Use of Peace Officers.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. And then our last item is to acknowledge the first reading of revised policies. This is the first of two readings required for the following revised policies. These were revised on November 13th, and were found to have major changes. So, these are policies 515, 616, 617, 620, 621, and 624. That's a lot.
Yeah, and, and not to, you know, make the process any longer, but I would like to just go down and point a couple of highlights out of these before you move forward. So, 515, I would, I would point your attention specifically to page 15. We did some changes there on parental rights of pupil records, primarily around following the law. Took some language out that felt more judgmental, and put it more towards we can follow the law. 616 had more to do with just moving forward to academic standards. That one's pretty straightforward. 617, we would, we're going to propose to repeal that policy because that still referenced the old profile of learning and everything else. And now that's stricken, everything else in that policy is covered based on some of the new policies we did with 618, 603, and 604. 620, Credit for Learning. The biggest change is there is everything having to do with online instruction has been removed and actually moved to the new 624. And so, that's the major change for 620. 621 is the new literacy REDACT. It's a process coming directly out of the new law that we, we are required by law to have. And that's, it's a pretty straightforward policy. And as I mentioned, the policy committee on Monday night, and I mentioned earlier in the evening, Brooke McGuire, our principals, our team have got that moving forward really well. And 624, replacing the old 624 with the new online instruction policy. Not a lot of significant changes, other than what you can and can't offer for credit for online instruction and what a district is allowed to do. A district is now allowed to provide online instruction to districts in, to students in their district. But you can't recruit somewhere from other else without being an accredited online, online provider. So, we're not becoming an online provider, and we don't provide us a significant amount of online options. But that's the difference, the similar other options laying out there for you. So, as you work through those, any committee member or myself could answer your questions, and for next time.
So, for 617, so we're going to remove that one from, or you're recommending that we?
Repeal that policy.
Okay, so it's everything in that policy is covered elsewhere or has been?
Correct.
I think it was about old standards that we don't follow anymore, so there's no reason for it. That's how I took it.
Correct. And the only things that were left when you did that, we covered somewhere else.
Yeah. It's not often that we take a policy out, so that, yeah. All right. Any other questions? Okay, so, next on our agenda, we will be going into a closed session, so we'll be ending the public portion of our meeting. But before we do that, I just wanted to jump down to upcoming items and reminders. So, next week, Thursday, Friday, the district will be closed because it is Thanksgiving break. And then December 1st is a professional workday, so students do not come to school on December 1st. So, make sure you guys all have that down. December 7th is our next school board work session. And then December 21st, this is our annual truth and taxation meeting. This, this meeting will have a start time of 6 o'clock PM. You can come at 5:30, but we're not going to start till 6:00, just so you know. And, but that's, public is encouraged to come to that meeting and definitely be part of public comment period, so. And there's a specific public comment period just for truth and taxation, so. All right, other than that, does anyone want to get their papers signed for extra credit before you, before we kick you out? Okay. Okay, can I get a motion then to move into closed session?
I'll make a motion that we move to closed session to discuss negotiations and, and the employee hearing request.
Second.
First and a second. We have a motion to go into closed session, so at this time, we're going to stop our live feed.